Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District Six on this, the eighth day of August 2022. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business world with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Mueller?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Pappas?
Present.
Director Sullivan?
Present.
All board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, we are back or about to be back. Our teachers are back in their classrooms or getting their classrooms ready. And if you're here with us in person, you notice that the room that you walked through is full of curriculum and there's a lot happening in the district right now. And so we're excited to be back, back to work as a board, but also excited that our kids will be back in the classroom this week. And so congratulations to all of those who are moving up to high school or who are moving up to middle school or who are just joining us for the very first time in kindergarten. And we hope your very first day of school this year is a fantastic one. You know, I often hear, and I did this last week, somebody made a statement, "Why don't schools do trades anymore? We used to have shop and automotive training." And the reality is, that I want to clear up is, we do trades. They don't necessarily look exactly like the trades that some of us trades classes that we had 30 years ago, but we do a lot of that. And I just always want to correct those kinds of statements. And I just pulled up the different pathways that we have in this district. So at Greeley Central, there's an advanced manufacturing pathway with an industry certificate. And at Greeley West, there's a business academy. There's a health sciences academy. There's a hospitality academy. I think that one's at Northridge. There's a STEM academy, an engineering pathway at Northridge. There's a construction academy and pathway with construction certificates that you can get at Jefferson. We do lots and lots of career education. And I bring that up because something on our consent agenda tonight is a career and technical education center. And so we're going to take things to another level. This is a contract that we will be approving tonight so that Jefferson can move a location, but also so that we can open a career and technical education center. That one will now include welding and cosmetology and several other things. So we're excited to announce that. We've already announced that. For those who missed the announcement, we're excited to announce it again. One other thing, just we want to give a great shout out as a board. We did this in our work session, but we want to do it publicly to our communications team, Ms. Teresa Myers, and all of those who worked this weekend at our backpack giveaway. We gave away 3,000 backpacks to students on Saturday. We also want to thank our community members that showed up for that and also got kids exposed to the different parts of our community and things that they provide for the community. It was a fantastic event, as it always is. So thank you to Ms. Myers, her team, Dr. Pilch, the rest of our administration team that was there, and our community members for making that happen for our students. It is a great benefit to the students of this district, again, for 3,000 backpacks, over 3,000 to be given away. We have another great benefit that is on our agenda tonight. I'm not going to spoil that surprise, but I just encourage you to watch the meeting all the way to the end. And that's all that I have for tonight. And we're now to the approval of our agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? There are none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our public participation. And the board welcomes the comments of our community members and has dedicated this portion of the agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments or pose questions to the board. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Lemon, not to individual board members. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of our school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they signed up, and comments are limited to three minutes. If you would like to reach out to us, you are always able to do that by email also. And so tonight, our first speaker... My website is loading. Sorry.
President Matthews, it's Mr. Steve Teetz.
Mr. Teetz.
Good evening, Board. Can't get it closer. My name is Steve Teetz. I'm Greeley, and I'll try to make you this as fast as possible. I understand you're going to have an override, and I noticed on your agenda at your work session that you discussed that, which I think is a very bad idea. And the reason why that means the taxes on the property is going to go up, which could affect housing and even your businesses. And we have enough problems trying to get housing, you know, if it's families, all kinds of groups, students, people with disabilities and seniors and so forth and so on. I do know that there was an amendment 23 years ago that was voted, and what we understood back then, that the amendment 23 was supposed to take care of most of the funding for the schools. There was other funding at that time as well. So I think that maybe we need to reconsider. Also, too, about the housing, we have a lot of people that are homeless, if it's families or otherwise, and yet we're the richest country in this world, and we've got a great big homeless problem. The other thing I want to talk about is the transit transportation, the students, which the last few years that we've had problems, the behavior, as well as they're stuck in like sardines, no offense on my sarcasm, but it is very dangerous and unhealthy. And they do have a capacity, which years ago, they used to put the capacity on the bus, but they don't do that anymore, which I think they should. So I would like to know, how many school bus drivers are you guys short? Last I heard, you were 18. I don't know. I haven't been brought up to date how much. And so we need to come up with a plan for the students to be able to maybe, if you can get more drivers for the school buses, so it can kind of help the Greeley-Evan Transit passengers that they're not so crowded in. Let's see. Like it was a few years ago that I know you guys had more bus drivers and all that. And there's once in a while, a student would take a bus, the Greeley-Evan Transit, but we need to kind of shift. And I'd like to know what you plan on doing to make things work better for getting more school buses, but as well as to make things safer for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Next, we have Mr. James Rankin. Welcome, Mr. Rankin. You have three minutes.
Superintendent Pilch, Board President Matthews, and rest of the board, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. In 2017, I voted for the last MLO. And I did so for a number of reasons, but one of the main reasons was I got a break on my federal taxes. So I'm happy to share dollars locally, which I really believe in as far as that goes versus nationally. My relationship to the district really is homeowner. I own some commercial property. I'm also on the citizen oversight committee for the MLO, which, by the way, we haven't met in quite some time. So I also looked at the adopted budget, 2022, 2023. And I will give Megan Spence a lot of credit. I always have given her credit and her team for doing very good with transparency. But honestly, after looking this over, I don't feel the need to renew this right now. So we've had a work session where you've heard the other side. The other thing I will say, if you're going to hear one side, I think you should hear another side from the opposition. And some of the tactics that are used to get this moving forward, I don't necessarily agree with either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Next up, we have Ms. Sherry Pfeif. Ms. Pfeif, you also have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to pick up kind of where Mr. Rankin left off. I could stand up here for 45 minutes and provide an educated and accurate counter comment to everything that I just heard Mr. Norton say over the last 45 minutes in the work session. But we, as a public, get three minutes to counter what he just told you for 45. You haven't heard the other side. It would be really nice if you would bring somebody in in two weeks and listen to the other side of this argument as to whether or not this MLO needs to go on the bond. The other part of this is, clearly, I haven't heard anybody actually... Well, a few of you really haven't actually listened to what the people who are opposed to this say. Nobody. Not Ms. Sullivan, not Mr. Norwood, not myself, not anybody, has said we are opposed to the MLO. We have said we are opposed to the MLO this year. You have two years to put this on the ballot. You could technically have three years to put this on the ballot because of the fact that property taxes run in arrears for a year, and we all know that. This is not the appropriate year to put this on the ballot. To start off with the ballot language, there's an idea that without raising taxes is a required language in this state. It is not required. It was litigated back during referendum C because the opponents to that did not want that in the language. The state of Colorado, the Supreme Court upheld that it is allowed language. It is not required language. So let's talk about whether or not you're really raising taxes. The mills are not raising. You're absolutely accurate. Your first sentence following "will not raise taxes" is 100% accurate. Your mills are not being raised. What is being raised is the values of everybody's homes. So the minute your value goes up on your home, the amount you pay on that mill is going to go up. What your taxpayers are going to pay in two to 10 years on this mill levy override is going to be raised, is going to be higher than what they're paying right now. Let's compound that with the fact that the state legislature a year ago decided to lower the property tax rates for two years. We talked about that upstairs, how the property tax rates are going down. They're only going down for two years. And they did that intentionally to confuse the voters with a ballot initiative that would have lowered the property tax rates permanently. So when this mill levy kicks in, your voters are not only going to have their property values go up so that they pay more taxes, but those property tax rates that are going down for two years are going to go right back to where they are right now, which is going to make it even higher. So yes, taxes will be increased. Furthermore, you are asking this year for your constituents to make a decision in November as to whether or not they will be able to overcome this economy, this inflation, these prices in two years, if they will have overcome that so that their property taxes will increase dramatically over what they're paying now because they will lower for two years and then they will go right back in the two years' time that it takes for their values to go up. This is not the year. Hold off for another year.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeif. Next, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. You have three minutes.
Hello, Board. Superintendent Pilch, we're just upstairs in the Astro Room that apparently was just revamped at the cost of a dollar amount that Superintendent Pilch won't give to me in order so that we could livestream public meetings up there. These public meetings are not recorded, for the record. The mics still don't catch the first sentence of the person speaking. There's ear-piercing feedbacks. The mics cut out during people, when people are speaking. And people are speaking from the sidelines who don't have mics. Not sufficient. Why can't we hold the work session meetings in this boardroom where everything works? Because there is no transparency. You guys are trying to hide something. You have your backs facing the public. Mr. Matthews is laughing at me. It's pretty funny, isn't it, Mr. Matthews? You like to laugh at the 666 in the district logo, too, don't you? Even though you're a pastor and you could do something about it, and you should do something about it, and you know it. You know you're a fraud. We know it, too. This meeting, the work session upstairs, meeting time was moved from 4:00 PM to 3:00 PM. As Taylor pointed out in the work session meeting upstairs, you guys are required to mail that notification out to each board member at the cost of about $30 an envelope. That is over $215 in expense just to move the meeting one hour. Don't talk to me about the budget. And you're saying that 85% of our budget goes to people. Well, let's talk about people because we're not talking about teachers. We're talking about a superintendent makes $286,000 a year. We're talking about a... We're talking about an assistant superintendent that makes $147,000 a year. $162,000 for the chief financial officer. Legal counsel, $117,000. Average is $62,000. Average for superintendent, for the record, is $147,000. So you're way ahead of that, Pilch. You're probably doing pretty good with this inflation, aren't you? We're not passing this mill, yeah, that's funny, too, isn't it? We're not passing this mill levy override. I will, I don't care what year you put this on the ballot. I will campaign against it with everything I have. I will go door-to-door. I will be on, I will, I will campaign aggressively against any MLO because none of you can be trusted with this money. You're not doing anything to benefit our kids. Nothing. We're talking about growth in Weld County, growth in District 6. We probably don't have to worry about that. This vaccine is killing people. It's going to kill, this is a mass genocide. Just give it a minute. Few more years, we don't have to worry about any population growth. Nobody's going to be fertile if they're alive, and they've taken this shot. Ballot language specifically asks for an exception to the limit of the Colorado Constitution. No. Oh, you guys are so gross. There's so many things. I've got an email from Superintendent Pilch that says that they do not have to record the public work session meetings, even though the attorney left his email up in the overflow room, and I saw where he said it is. So Attorney Nathan Fall, were you wrong the first time, or are you wrong this time? Nathan Fall, I'm calling you by name, and you're not looking up from your computer.
Ms. Miller, your time is up. Thank you. Next tonight, we have our work session report. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
The Board of Education began the work session with comments and reports from each board member and reviewed upcoming events. The Board and Superintendent Dr. Pilch discussed school visits for the upcoming school year. The Board received information and had the chance to ask questions about the 2017 mill levy override and about a possible ballot measure regarding a renewal of the mill levy override. The Board concluded with a debrief of the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Now we have our superintendent's report. So Dr. Pilch, can you give us your report, please?
I do, thank you. Let me get to the right page here. I've got stuff on my phone to share and stuff I wrote down. Thank you. President Matthews, first, I want to talk a little bit about safety and security, because I know that's present of mind after this past late spring with the incident in Uvalde, Texas. So for the Board of Education, you all will receive an update at the August 22 meeting from Chief of Safety and Security Gates. And he will come prepared to give you an overview of some of the additional layers of security we're putting in place, talk a little bit about the additional training that we're looking at. Remembering that we don't disclose everything that we do for safety and security because to disclose our entire plan would put us in a vulnerable position with, possibly with perpetrators. So, but the first part of this plan that I want to share with you is that I've been going out to staffs and just talking about the importance of our greatest prevention measures. And the first and most important prevention measure we have is us. Paying attention and listening and securing doors and reporting anything that seems out of place and anything that we are concerned about as a staff member, whether that's a child or an adult. And so I've talked about that being the first thing we must do and get it to our administration as quickly as possibly, as possible, so we can get our security folks involved in that and do a threat assessment if it involves a student. The other thing I've been talking with staff about is our next best defense, which is really the relationships we have with our students. Our students do talk to our staff because our students trust our staff. And I'm encouraging teachers and other staff to continue to build those relationships and to really listen to their students. And that when they hear things that are red flags, that they take action and get with the school counseling staff and administration to address those worries. I'm going to introduce to you here in a minute our new Director of Safety and Security. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the work that he will be doing, too. But it's in addition to these other pieces that I've mentioned. You all are aware of the double-entry doors that the bond issue has allowed us to do. We're about 2/3 of the way through with those double-entry doors. I've also reminded staff of the importance of not just buzzing in who's ever at the door, that we really are checking that that person is supposed to be there at the school. And that we're not propping doors open on the exterior of the building. Yep, you know, that's, and that we've secured a door, that when we walk away from that door, that we've pulled it shut, and we know that it's secure, just like we would do in our own homes and making sure our doors are locked, or we've closed the garage door when we drive away. We will be doing some additional training. Chief Gates will talk about that more when he comes before you here in two weeks, a little bit more about the training. I think this is a good time for me to introduce our new Assistant Director of Safety and Security, Wade Corles, if you'll give a wave from back there. We feel really fortunate to have Wade here on our team. We had our former Assistant Director of Safety and Security, Steve Brown, leave the district, which opened up this position. And Wade comes to us with a background in law enforcement. He has served as a School Resource Officer, I think at Heath Middle School. Yeah, all the middle schools, Greeley Central. But he's also been, most recently, the Sergeant of the School Resource Officers and the head of the SWAT team for the Greeley Police Department. So he comes with a wealth of experience around interventions in some very, very intense crisis situations. So I think he's going to be a real asset to us, and we're really pleased. He said yes and chose to come on over to District 6 to support our families and students and staff. I'll introduce the rest of the new staff who are with us here tonight. We did some hiring while you were on break. And you've received their BIOS and information about them previously, but I do want to draw your attention to them. I'll first introduce to you Mr. Greg Cockeen. If you'll stand and give a wave. So Greg has agreed to come back and serve as the interim principal at North Ridge High School. And I'm so grateful for Greg. He was previously in our Human Resources Department as a director. He actually followed me here from our former school district and has since, he and his wife have since moved here to the Greeley community. So thank you, Greg, so much. Lots of high school and district-level experience that he brings. And I saw him the other day at the school kickoff, and he said he's really having a good time. So that says a lot when you come out of retirement to run a big high school. I'm also excited to introduce to you Mr. Anthony Saris. Anthony, I saw you back there. Welcome. We're so glad to have you. He was hired as Assistant Principal at Heath Middle School, and he comes to us from Central High School, where he was a mathematics teacher, about year nine or so in the district, Anthony? Yeah. So welcome, Anthony. We're really glad to have you. And I see that you've got your team there around you. So thanks for coming to support, you guys. Appreciate that. And then finally, I want to introduce to you our new coordinator for the culturally-linguistically diverse students. This was a position that was vacated. You know, we moved Jessica Cooney to Greeley Central High School as the AP. And so we were able to hire Liz Gonzalez in that position. And Liz comes to us with most of her experience out of the Aurora Public Schools District and some in Colorado Springs. She's served as a lead teacher and as an interim principal. So welcome, Liz. We're so glad to have you here in the district. Thanks for joining the Greeley team, Greeley-Evans team. So I get all the new hires, Mrs. Overton? All right. And you all may, you may want to stick around all night, but you'll know at the appropriate point, you can just hop up and go. But thanks again for being here, and Rob wants to applaud. So along those same lines, we welcomed new teachers back. Some of our newest teachers who need to have additional training on their licensure. Those, so teachers who haven't, don't have experience in teaching. They started here nearly two weeks ago here in the district. And then last week, we had all the new teachers in at the beginning of the week, and then every staff member returned last Thursday. So we've had a chance to be, to be meeting with those teachers. A lot of professional development has been taking place and getting ready, you know, for the new school year. We hired over 220 teachers this year and had about another 200 in the system who made changes in their assignment. So either they moved to an assistant principal, or an instructional coach, or to another building, or went to Toynton Academy, which we needed a whole staff there. So a lot of movement and a lot of excitement around hiring and transitions this summer. And then just finally, President Matthews, you mentioned the school kickoff. What a great event. And we just could not do that event without the support of our community. As you said, we gave away over 3,000 backpacks, and we did 172 physicals. So I want to give a big shout out to Banner and their support of doing those physicals for us at that event. We could have done double that number of physicals. So so grateful for that partnership and those doctors and PAs who gave their time to come in and do those physicals that day. So thank you so much to the community. If you did not get a backpack because you came late or you left because you thought we were going to run out, I would encourage you to reach out to your school, and the school will make arrangements to get you and your, get your student the backpack and the school supplies that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is to approve our consent agenda. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing done. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the 2022-2023 district curriculum adoption. And this is an action item that will need a motion to begin discussion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approve the adoption of the 2022-23 district curriculum as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Before we open this up for our board members to discuss and ask questions, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to provide?
Yeah, thank you, President Matthews. So it is a requirement that annually, that the Board of Education adopts the district curriculum that will be taught during that school year. And Dr. Dattery is here to give you an overview and answer any questions you might have between the two of us.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, President Matthews, and members of our school board.
It is my pleasure to bring forward to you the 2022-2023 curriculum guides from our curriculum teams and our curriculum department. Joining me this evening is Mr. Dagan Andrews. He is our Director of Curriculum and Personalized Learning. Thank you for being here as well. Annually, as Dr. Pilch stated, the curriculum guides are updated to reflect changes in the Colorado academic standards, to align to new instructional resources when we have those, and to ensure alignment to the state assessment system, which is the Colorado measures of academic success, as well as to the PSAT at high school and our SAT. These guides are also in alignment with the Colorado Revised Statutes that outlines the work to be done at the local level. Additionally, curriculum review is in alignment with Innovation 2030, specifically within Student Learning and Achievement Goal 2, which states that we will implement consistent and coherent-aligned curriculum, assessment, and instructional practices that are research-based to ensure all students learn. This year, curriculum teams met to align the new K-5 literacy curriculum and to make adjustments in K-12 math, to increase alignment to state assessments, and to 612 social studies to the revised state standards. Additional alignment work was done with Prairie Heights, Franklin, and Heath, who are using the Summit Learning Platform. Alignment for these three schools was completed in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. Social Studies work for our Summit Schools will be completed next, this coming May, 2023. These teams met to map vertical progression of concepts and skills across grade levels and identify the level of rigor within the standards. The work groups that met included approximately 73 teachers, coordinators, instructional coaches, and administrators to review and edit these guides for District 6 educators across our district. The teams, led by their content coordinators, integrated current expectations and guidance from the Colorado Department of Education into the curriculum guides. This curriculum will be implemented across District 6 classrooms in these content areas for the 2022-2023 school year. And so the curriculum guides presented to you this evening in your board packet include all core content areas of K-12 Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, and the elective areas of K-12 Music, Art, PE Health, as well as 612 World Languages. Following board approval, the curriculum guides will be posted on our district website for access to all of our staff, our parents, and community. Additionally, these guides are shared internally through Google Sharing so that all teachers in that particular content or grade level have access to utilize these curriculum guides, as well as all the accompanying documents that teachers have put together for their use. It is with sincere appreciation and gratitude that I bring these curriculum guides to you this evening. Our leaders and our teachers have worked diligently and many hours to bring them to you in this way this evening. So I thank you for your consideration and action on these curriculum guides.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. We may have some questions for you, so I know we at least have one, Ms. Pappas.
Well, I think I always say this every year, but truly, thank you so much, and thanks to everyone that has put the work into this. And I just want to reiterate the fact to our public, but also our new board members, that this vertical process has been in place for many, many years. And the fact that it continues to be the process, I'm sure it's evolved and improved. But still, I think it's important for people to know that this has been a continued process. So I appreciate that. And then can you just talk a little bit about how teachers are able to dig into their curriculums and a little bit about curriculum days before school starts, just a little bit of explanation for that?
Absolutely. So two ways that our teachers, when we really think about our new Professionals Academy that Dr. Pilch referenced in her report, that is the first time that our new teachers are able to access them. And we really kind of go slow and really make sure that our teachers know not only where to access them, but what's in sight and all the supports that they can find as they are entering into the profession here in District 6 and really being able to access the curriculum well. And then on Curriculum Day, all of our teachers are in various places across the district in their content areas and their grade levels. And we really go into, particularly if there are major changes made, as well as just any kind of nuances or supports that they have now, this year, going into this coming school year. And that, we really utilize that day with all teachers, K-12, for the day on Curriculum Day. And that was just this past Friday, August 5. And then just ongoing work, instructional coaches, our principals. We have content leaders at our different schools and different grade bands that really help teachers just in that kind of in-the-moment, ongoing work. Because as we know, the guides are there to guide, but then the nuances of really helping to support teachers with the students in their classroom is ongoing work. So that's kind of the, I would say, a three-tier, if you will, approach to supporting our teachers, utilizing these guides well.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Dr. Dattery, I'm not seeing any. And so this is fairly routine for us to see you say that every year. But I also want to thank not just you, but, did you say 73 teachers and how many administrators?
73 teachers, administrators, instructional coaches, yes.
Total group of 73. And we know it comes down to those committees that work those extra hours to make sure that everything is aligned and we're doing the best we can for our kids. And so we want to thank all those 73 for the additional hours that they spent on this curriculum. So thank you very much. But we do need to vote if we're going to adopt it. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next on our agenda is the Revision to Policy GCKA Instructional Staff Assignments and Transfers. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
President Matthews? I believe that one was pulled from the agenda.
Okay.
I apologize.
I am still loading. I don't, I don't know why my, well, I'm not connecting to the website. So I will trust that this is the next agenda item. And it's Revisions to Policy IC/ICA School Year/School Calendar Instructional Time. Is that correct? But this is also an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District 6 approves the revisions to Policies IC/ICA School Year/School Calendar Instructional Time as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Now, Dr. Pilch, before we open this up for board members, is there anything that you need to say regarding this policy change?
I'll just share that this is the policy that is a result of legislation this past spring that allows for remote learning, remote learning to count as instructional time. And so we learned during the pandemic that there were times that children might need to be remote and And technically, state law had not allowed for that. They made an exception, of course, during the state health emergency. But now, we've codified it once you approve it tonight, and we will be able to count those minutes going forward.
Excellent. Any questions, comments from board members on this policy? Policy change? Signee, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the repeal of board action from August 27, 2021, and January 24, 2022. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 repeals the requirements established on January 24, 2022, and August 27, 2021 regarding protocols and practices related to COVID-19. This decision shall become effective on Monday, August 8, 2022. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to take any lawful actions necessary to ensure the continuation of public education, to provide for the health and safety of students and employees, or to respond to direction from appropriate health and government authorities.
Second.
Thank you. As usual, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you if there's anything you want to say before we take this to the board for discussion.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I'm, we're just asking to return that decision-making to me as the superintendent and to repeal those two separate board actions that were taken previously.
All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? Not seeing any. So, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Finally, on our agenda tonight is free meals for all students. And this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 authorizes up to $2 million of the general fund balance to support free meals for all students.
Second. Thank you both. Again, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you to lead off, but I bet you might have more to say on this one.
Thank you, President Matthews. So, as you all know, we were able to do free meals without charge for breakfast and lunch during the pandemic with dollars that we received from the federal government. That, those dollars ended with this school year in spite of lots of efforts to try to keep those dollars going. So, one of our board members asked the question. So, thank you very much for asking the question if it would be possible for us to continue free meals. And initially, we thought, gosh, how many millions of dollars will this cost us? And we worked with Danielle Bach, our Director of Nutrition Services. And we really believe that if we get every student to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Form and we're able to access those dollars from the federal government, USDA, to pay for those children, that we would be looking at $1.5 to $2 million to pay for the rest of the students in our district. And we believe it will only be for this one year that we will need to do that. When Ms. Bach gets into her conversation with you all, she'll share with you more about why we believe it's a one-year-only fix that we need to be concerned about. As you know, from the budget work that we have done, we have a healthy fund balance because of our ability to use S or dollars to cover some of our operational costs over these last couple of years. And so, with that, we have gained in our fund balance, and it does seem appropriate that we would spend down up to $2 million of that fund balance to make sure that all children are able to have breakfast and lunch here in our schools, including the charter schools who access District 6 lunch, which is everybody except for university. Did I get it right? It's everybody? It is everybody. Okay. It is everybody. All right. I had some misinformation there, which is why I have the really smart people here, right? So, with that, I want to introduce Ms. Bach, our Director of Nutrition Services, to just kind of walk you through what we're thinking and why we're thinking it and give you a chance to ask questions. And then, hopefully, consider this as a possible yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch. And thank you to the members of the board for allowing me some time to speak with you this evening on this issue. So, as Dr. Pilch indicated, I am here to talk about healthy school meals for all District 6 students. My name is Danielle Bach. That SNS behind my name stands for School Nutrition Specialist. Hardest test of my life, and this is what we get out of it. You know, in nutrition services, we have a value. And that value is that food is a basic human right. It is not a privilege. And we see it as our responsibility to ensure access to healthy nutritious food for all of our students. As Dr. Pilch indicated, in March of 2020, March 13th, Friday, March 13th, as I recall, she called me to her office, and she asked me if it was possible for us to take a two-week spring break. I still really enjoy reflecting on that two-week spring break. It's been two and a half years. And we managed to do it. But largely, we managed to do it because the USDA provided us so many flexibilities within an otherwise highly-regulated school nutrition program. This slide is simply to refresh your memories about some of the milestones that you all may have not known were milestones. But truly, we got those first waivers in March of 2020. We were already back in school operating the National School Lunch Program before the USDA authorized the second of our waivers in September of 2020. That was some paperwork. And then, of course, that was supposed to end at the end of first semester. And so, in November, when we realized that the pandemic was not done with us, we got a new set, again in March of 2021, and again in September of 2021. Really, what was happening is that the congressional authorities in the governing bodies, as well as the USDA, were really just kicking the can down the road, waiting for the opportunity to say this pandemic is over and we no longer need to operate. However, in June of 2022, our waivers ended. And we didn't have further guidance from where to go to feeding all kids for free, to returning to life as we knew it prior to the pandemic. So, whoops. Sorry about that. What we do know about our program is that it really improves the academic achievement of our students. We know factually that we have better attendance, improved behavior, improved concentration in class, and as a result of that, better academic performance. Oh, man. And what we also know is that students are eating with us. This morning, we had the opportunity to bring all of our nutrition team together in Northridge's auditorium and celebrated, for the first time in our history, 3 million meals served last school year. Certainly, our largest year on record. That number includes 20% more participation during our breakfast program and 40% more during our lunch program. So, really, I just want you guys to have a little more understanding of where we are today and where we go next. So, when the eligibility requirements came out for the USDA's National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program to operate this year, the eligibility for a family of four is just under $52,000. If you have managed your own household budget in the last few years, you know that a family of four at $52,000 is probably a stretch. That is the threshold that a family must meet in order to participate in the Free and Reduced Meals Program. Now, I want to tell you briefly why it's only one year. And this is the really good news. And that is that in school year 23-24, we expect as a state to have access to Medicaid Direct Certification data from the state. I'm going to unpack that just a little bit for you. Every couple of weeks, my department uploads a list of students. The state matches those students with any families who are eligible or receiving Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, otherwise known as food stamps. They return that list to us, and we automatically certify any of those students on that list for the Free Lunch Program. Because we know if their family's income meets the need for SNAP benefits, then they meet the threshold for child nutrition programs. What we don't do is Medicaid, even though it's the exact same threshold. This has largely been because of administrative hangups between the state and the counties who operate the Medicaid program. We expect that during this next year, we will overcome all of those hurdles. The USDA will provide us the opportunity to operate that Medicaid Direct Cert. So, when we look at direct certification, our district currently only has 35% of our students who are receiving SNAP. But close to 70% of our students qualify for Free and Reduced Lunch. So, we know that we're missing that gap. And when we are able to incorporate the Medicaid data into that, it will push us over the 40% threshold necessary to operate the community eligibility provision. And I'm not going to bore you to tears by telling you all of the ins and outs of this governmental provisional program. I will simply say this. For students, what it means is access to all meals. No stigma, no costs. It makes lines go better. It provides my department more funding to help operate a better, more nutritious program. For parents, no more Free and Reduced application and no more worrying about putting money in their student's account because all students will eat for free, regardless of their eligibility. For school administrators, it streamlines that meal service. So, we are not having every student identify based on eligibility in the cafeteria. And for school administrators, it really reduces the amount of administrative burden that they are experiencing communicating back and forth with their families, as well as real program integrity. Not having to know, is this student eligible? Is this student not eligible? And the reason that we can get there is because with the Medicaid data in the fall of 2023, we will be eligible for that program, and we are not currently eligible today. So, I'm just going to back up real quick to the ask. What I am here to ask you to do is to consider, for this one time, this one year, allowing us the opportunity to cover that cost of the denied students. Since we fed them for free for two and a half years, and we know we're going to feed them for free next school year, let's cover this one year for our families and help them get back into the rhythms of our school system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bach. I bet we do have a few questions for you. And first is Mr. Norwood.
First of all, Ms. Bach, thank you very much for what you do. You are an incredible asset to this district, and I just can't tell you how fortunate we are to have you here. I support this 100%. I've seen kids, when they go on break, the anxiety that they have, the anxiousness that they have of where the next meal is going to come from. And it's heartbreaking. So, I just want to tell you thank you, and I support this 100%.
Next, we have Mr. Bentley.
Yeah. I kind of want to echo what Rob said. We are really lucky to have you. We've sat through here and watched your awards and seen the great work you've done and your passion for the job you do. I think, timing-wise, with our money we have left over from the COVID era and some of the budget surplus we have in the general fund, plus the ability through your staff and in your department and given the political environment with inflation and everything that everybody's all worried about, I can't see maybe a better God-given time than currently. So, thank you, guys, and thank you for everybody that's worked on this.
Ms. Mueller?
Ms. Bach, you were very clear, but I just need to make sure I heard this correctly. As someone who has helped with trying to register people for Free and Reduced Lunch benefits, are you telling me that CEP and the inclusion of the Medicaid criteria means we will no longer have to do paperwork and recruit people or get people into the Free and Reduced Lunch Program?
Would you like me to answer that?
I would like you to answer that.
Had you asked me if it meant that we no longer had to do the Free and Reduced Form, I would have said yes, board member Mueller, that is true. However, you used the word paperwork.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'm going to hedge back a little bit. The community eligibility provisional program does require that families complete a family economic data survey, otherwise known as a FEDS Form. This is the financial data that the state will also use to certify our funding for at-risk and title programs. So, there will still be paperwork. But here's the great news. It'll only be once every five years.
Oh, my gosh.
So, the Free and Reduced Form is annually. The FEDS Form is every five years.
So, I know in conversations with you and other people on your staff and administrators across the district that worry about this every year, the real and profound fear that you're missing families because they will not fill out or were afraid to fill out the paperwork for many reasons. You know, federal forms are very scary to many people. And so, what I'm hearing you say is that this could make sure every family will ensure that their children will be fed and not have that barrier there anymore.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Pappas?
I think my question was answered about the Free and Reduced Form that is required. And I may have to follow up with this later. But we also use the Free and Reduced Form to determine whether students need additional support, waivers in other parts of their school life. So, should I just follow up? Should we follow up with that later? I don't know how that all plays.
I'm happy to address that right now. And Megan will jump in if we need more help. So, I think you're talking, Ms. Pappas, about like Title I funding and, you know, 21st Century Grants and our School Council Core Grants. We get a lot of grants based on our count for Free and Reduced Lunch. We also waive athletic fees and other kinds of fees. So, what is happening with this change in law, and Colorado is a little behind other states in getting it implemented, is that other factors have been identified to count kids as at-risk beyond just Free and Reduced Lunch. And so, that's the Medicaid piece that Ms. Bach is referencing. And so, we will still have those numbers and those counts to be able to use for those other support services. So, the fortunate thing is we'll only need to collect them once every five years. Ms. Sponsors or anything else that we would need to add to that? So, you know, this is a big change. Colorado has been very behind in catching up with the rest of the country around this and has had a lot of difficulty trying to determine
and has had a lot of difficulty trying to determine how to count kids as at-risk for at-risk funding. And so we see this as a positive change, and we think it's definitely going to benefit the students in District Six.
Thank you. And then additionally, I just want to say how much I appreciate you and all you've done over the past, I don't know, however long it's been, two and a half years, to provide food for our kids. It has been amazing. Your staff is amazing, and truly, I am so grateful that you are here in our district. So thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work you've done to make sure that we can keep this going this year for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Ms. Mash?
I just want to echo what everyone else has said as well. I love the quote that nutritious food is not a privilege. It is absolutely a necessity, and it's a necessity for all the work of learning and achievement, and so they're intimately tied together. And I just love the way you, your worldview for these students. I mean, you're just like, I'm not feeding this student over here. I'm not feeding that school. I want to feed everyone in Greeley. So, yeah, absolutely no-brainer. So glad we get to vote on this.
Ms. Sullivan.
Hello. So I just wanted to ask, this program that you're talking about, it's guaranteed to kick in next year, or is there some provisions that have to take place before it?
So the authorization for the state of Colorado to access Medicaid data in our direct certification will be approved by the USDA in September. That has not officially been rubber stamped. However, I have spoken to the Undersecretary of USDA Agricultural Programs over the summer, and she guarantees me that that will go through. They want all 50 states accessing data, and the reality is Colorado is behind. So the USDA would like to catch us up to that. After September, the big lift will then be on the county Health and Human Services Departments to collect that data so that we can use it. Unfortunately, I have no control over that, but it is very much our intention to apply for CEP for the 2324 school year with that data in place. I hope that answers your question.
It did. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else needing to comment, so I'll just say thank you to you, Danielle, for being here tonight, for the excellent job that you do. And I thank Ms. Mash for bringing this to our attention and having this idea. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Such a wonderful thing that we get to do for our kids, and so exciting. So thank you all, and Ms. Lemon, we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Mueller?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have for you tonight. Thank you for joining us here. If you're in the room, thank you for joining us online. If you've done so, this meeting is now adjourned.